No mai harima ki naa k tangata o puki huihino ki tikau papa iti naira. Welcome to this webinar for Pukihino Lampton Ward on the annual plan and also the parking policy. My name is Esther Bukholdt of Soulstone and I'll be your host and emcee for this evening. As is the custom with Wellington City Council meetings, we will begin with a karakia. Pakataka te ho, which is a a karakia which evokes the natural environment for the for the meeting that we have here now. So please join me. Pakataka te ho ki te uru. Pakataka te ho ki te tonga. Ki amā kina ki uta. Ki amā tara tara ki tai. Ehi ake ana te atukura. He tio, he huka, he houhu, ti hei māori ora. And welcome. In recent weeks, life has changed in ways that none of us could have imagined. And we have all had to adapt to new ways of living, working and playing. And these sessions are designed as an alternative to the usual face-to-face consultations that Wellington City Council provides. In this session, you'll have the opportunity to hear from Andy Foster, our mayor, and local councillors. But first, a bit of housekeeping. For those of you who are new to webinars, you'll see a dialogue box there on your right-hand side. And you can have a play with the controls to change the screen and particularly the settings on how you see us as speakers. There's also a handout dropdown box. And we've supplied you with four handouts. One on the parking policy, one on the annual plan, the PowerPoint of the session and also an accessible PowerPoint. These these webinars are being recorded, so you can see them afterwards. And by next Wednesday, they'll also be closed, captioned and up online on Let's Talk. You as the attendees are on mute, but you can log your questions with us live in the questions dropdown slide. And please, you can start doing that now and throughout the sessions. We'll pick up as many of those as we can. Thank you, Olivia. So our agenda for tonight is first this introduction by myself. And then Andy will be giving an overview of the annual plan, answering some questions, some of those that you've put in earlier and some that you can send in live. And then Jenny Conde will be talking on the parking policy and fielding some of your questions. This will be followed by a panel of your local councillors and the mayor, both the questions that you have put to us beforehand and at the time. So that's that's our run plan for the day. So these are the councillors who will be with you. So if you would like to come in and join us now and introduce yourselves. Cameras on, microphones on. Thank you. And if you'd just like to take the slide off, Olivia. And Andy.
Well, good evening, everybody. Andy Foster. Kia ora kato, Andy Foster. I've got the privilege of being your mayor. I live up in Cororrie and I think we've just been reflecting a little bit on what lockdown, the lockdown period has been like for all of us. And you know, it's been fascinating being able to work from home, do a lot of the work that we do do, but also having two teenage children who have been doing their studies from home as well. So a very interesting period.
Councillor Conde.
Kia ora mai tato. I'm Jenny Conde. I'm a councillor for the Northern Ward. I'm here tonight to present to you on the parking policy as part of my portfolio area. Hopefully, I don't have any exciting BBC Dad-style moments tonight because in the previous webinar, I had my four-year-old crash in during bedtime. And during the council meeting today, I had my dog crash in and sit on my lap for some of the meetings. So it's always a good time at this house.
Thank you. Welcome. And councillor Pannett.
Kia ora kato. I own a Pannett, one of the Pukihino Lampton Ward councillors. And really happy to be here and looking forward to hearing your questions.
Lovely. And welcome councillor Young. You're on mute.
Hi, I'm Nicola Young. I'm also Lampton Ward councillor. I live on Mount Victoria and I'm looking forward to tonight's session. So let's hope it goes really well. Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome councillor Paul.
Kia ora tato. Hui rui ma nei tōtato nei hui i te po. Ko temata Paul Tōkuenga wai hiri tene no ngatiawa me wa kautu tainui hoki. Kia ora Pukihino. My name is Temata Paul. I am the third Pukihino Lampton Ward councillor here to talk to you all and record it all tonight about the annual plan. Really looking forward to it. Kia ora.
Kia ora. Hi, mai. Thank you. So I'd like, Olivia, if you could bring up the PowerPoint for us again. And we'll see the rest of you, except Andy, shortly. So that's a little bit about us, but now a little bit about you. So of those of you who have registered today, there were nearly 60 of you. Nearly 70 of you live in this ward. Quite a lot of you from wider Wellington City Council. And also welcome, special welcome to 5% of you who are from outside Wellington City. And as well as those of you who are listening now, this webinar will be posted online and that's often very popular. So welcome to you if that's you too. You also asked us some questions. You had a range of questions about the annual plan. Here's a few of them that we'll be looking at and answering tonight. You also asked questions about the parking policy, particularly interested in parking in the central city and that balance between car parking and active modes of transport. And you also asked some questions, here's a summary of a few of them, about things happening in your community, which we will be posing to the panel in the second half of this session. So just before we start with Andy's presentation, we'd like to run a short poll. So that Andy has a picture of how familiar you are with the annual plan. So if you'd like to launch that, Olivia. We'd like to know whether prior to this webinar, you've got a chance to look at the Wellington City Council annual plan online. So just tick the box that makes most sense to you. Have we got those coming in, Olivia?
Yep, we've got about half of our participants today responding. A few more coming in now, but I'm just going to close that poll and share those results with you.
Fantastic. So, oh, awesome. So 70 or 80% of you have at least had a bit of a look. So Andy, on that note, I'm going to pass over to you to give people more in-depth insight into the annual plan, the decisions that you're offering there. Thank you.
Okay, we go straight to the next slide, I think, don't we?
Yes.
Right. Okay. But welcome again, everybody. Great to have you along here with us. And hopefully, we'll be able to walk you through what's in the annual plan, although clearly, most of you have already read it, at least in part. And then to go through the parking policy and then to try and answer some questions, both on the annual plan, the parking policy, and there's a number of local ward issues that people wanted to raise as well with it. So looking forward to that. So first of all, we're going to start off with COVID's impact on Wellington City. And for some of us, it's, you know, we've been able to work from home. You know, we're still employed and, you know, it's been a different time, a very different time. But it hasn't had necessarily a huge economic impact on us. But for other people, where they are in businesses which have been not able to operate at all, they're employed, they run the business. It's had a dramatic effect and will probably continue to have a dramatic effect. We don't know how big, how significant that effect is going to be. We've seen the economic projections that suggest to us that there's going to be significant unemployment as a result of the COVID slowdown and the lockdown process. But we don't know how big that's going to be. But what we do know is that it's going to have a significant effect right across the country, right across the world, and we're not going to be immune from that. So we'll go on to the next slide. COVID's also had a significant impact on the council. So not only is it impacting businesses, particularly in the areas like accommodation, retail, the events and arts, but it's also had a significant effect on council. And so we are projecting that council will lose almost $70 million in revenue and in dividends. So that's our user charges, that's the dividend from the airport. Some of that's in the year we're already in, that's the 2019-20 year. And some of that is in the year that we're talking about now, which is the 2020-2021 year. We've also, we started this process, this is the third year of our 2018-2028 long-term plan. And that set out what our rates expectations were right the way through to 2028. This year, that's the 2020-2021 year I'm referring to there, we were expecting a 7.1% rates increase. The following year, 6.8, the year after that, 6.2, and then 7.0%. So those four years effectively close to 28%. And that excluded provision for Let's Get Wellington Moving, Civic Square and the library. It excluded any extra investment in water. It excluded any investment in the three temporary libraries in the central city. And it certainly didn't include the $70 million which we're going to lose as a result of the COVID impact. So you can see we had a really significant pressures on council, on council costs and therefore on rates. Next slide, please, Olivia. So when we went into the pandemic situation and the lockdown, the first thing we needed to do is to try and soften the impact because we knew that a lot of businesses were simply not going to be in a position to be able to afford the rates that we would impose upon them, the various rentals where we're the landlord, fees, charges, et cetera. So the first, what we did pretty early on was to put in place a pandemic response and recovery plan. So the first bit was to try and soften the impact of what we did. So what we did immediately was to say, we are going to provide for those people who needed it. And there are a set of criteria, you'd have seen those in your rates bill if you're a rate payer, that have come through the mail in the last few days. And that was to allow businesses and residents who can show a significant impact from the COVID-19 lockdown to be able to defer their rates without the usual rates penalty. So that allowed you to put those rates off until December. We also, when we were the landlord, said, look, we're not going to be collecting those rentals at this stage. And also, where you paid fees and charges, whether it's in the hospitality industry and you might have had a liquor licence or you might have had a pavement rental, those sort of things. We also said, look, we're not going to charge you for those kind of things during the lockdown period because we know that you can't earn any money and therefore you can't afford to pay it. So that was our first, our first response. The other part was that we obviously also put a lot of emphasis on welfare and particularly for those of our community who are the least able, who are most vulnerable, the homeless community in particular. So we spent a lot of time and energy in supporting organisations like City Mission, DCM, et cetera, who did a fantastic job working with those most vulnerable people. And we had a lot more people who actually needed their services as well. And then we've also been doing a lot of work to plan recovery. And that's particularly about trying to draw more people back into the central city. The central city is a jewel, not just for Wellington City, but also for the rest of the region. And we believe it's the best central city in the country. We need to put that central city back together again, essentially to repair it and to bring people back. So we have that fantastic vibrancy and the life that we all love as a central city having. Let's move on to the next slide, please, Olivia. The second part, so that's the pandemic response and recovery plan. The second part is the draft annual plan. And what we've done here, obviously, this is what consulting on at the moment. And it had to be a plan that balanced the rates impact with the need to continue to invest in existing services and invest in the city itself. So we don't want the city just to stand still, we don't want to do nothing. But we also can't just stop all the services and just, some people wanted us to go to a zero rates situation. We could have achieved that, but the only way we can achieve that is to cut quite a number of services to do that. And so we'd appreciate people's feedback on those sort of things. We think we've got the balance about right. We started off with a 9.2% rates increase, which we were about to go out with. And then we've drawn that back to 5.1%. Let's go to the next slide, please, Olivia. As I said, we are borrowing, one of the ways we're softening the impact is to borrow to offset lost revenue. So as I said, $20 million roughly speaking, we're losing in the current 2019-20 year. And then we estimate we'll lose about another $38 million in revenue 2020-2021. And we were already projecting to or intending to go out with a number of user charge increases. We've pulled back on nearly all of those. And that equates to another $11 million. So 38 plus 11 plus 20, you're roughly at the $70 million I mentioned earlier. If we were to charge for that now, it would add about 12% to the rates. Now, that's never going to be a comfortable proposition and least of all now. This is the rainy day. And so what we, and I know that quite a number of other councils are doing across the country, is to borrow to cover the lost revenue. We think we can do that because we're expecting that revenue to recover over a period of time, over the next two or three years. And therefore, we'll be back to a sort of balanced budget situation. What we can't do is borrow to fund today's groceries. That wouldn't be a reasonable proposition. So we'll move on to the next one. Thanks, Olivia. As I mentioned earlier, that we also need to continue to invest in the future. So we can't just have our city standing still. If we're going to be a confident, proud capital city, we need to keep on investing. What are the kind of things that people are telling us they want us to invest in? Well, we want to become a more sustainable city. We obviously need to keep on investing in resilience. We could, one of the propositions we had really early on in the lockdown period was what would happen if we had an earthquake at the same time? That really didn't be a thinking about, but we had to have to prepare for that. As a city, we're going to have to keep on making sure we become a more resilient city. And we also want to keep on investing in the overall livability of the city. If, you know, we want people to love living here, we've got to keep on investing in the things that people love. So what are those kinds of things? All I've mentioned, some of them already, Let's Get Wellington Moving. We're actually trying to accelerate that. It's the things that transform our city to try and make our transport system more sustainable. We're trying to accelerate investment in walking, cycling and public transport. To Nāraka Civic Square, you can't really expect to draw people back into the city and to make the central city a vibrant place if you have the heart of the city not functional. So we need to invest in that. And I know there's a question on Central Library, so I'll answer that later on. We've also got two of the temporary central city libraries already operational and another one to come, Te Awa, which will be opened in July. And then we're also investing more in the Three Waters network. In the last few months, we've seen some very high-profile breakages in our water system and our sewage system. And we're obviously working very hard to get those fixed. And we know that we need to invest more in those. And that's what we're doing in this budget. And we're also doing through the Mural Task Force. We're looking at how much we need to invest going forward in our water and sewage networks. Next one, please, Olivia. So key projects for 2021. So these are included in the existing long-term plan. That's the 2018-2028 long-term plan and in this budget. So Three Waters, we've added another $2.9 million into the budget. And that's basically for doing condition assessment. So we actually know what the state of our Three Waters network is. And also in what we're calling Roving Crews. So another team to be able to go out and look for leaks, look for places where the network's not performing as we want it to. And that's both the public and the private network, so private individuals' networks as well. The Convention and Exhibition Centre, we get lots of questions about that. Well, the work is underway. It started in September of last year and we've already invested heavily in that. It's about 800 jobs involved in the construction process and the supply chains to support that construction process. That's expected to open in 2023. The St James Theatre is undergoing a significant strengthening work and also some of the services refurbishment. And that's expected to open at the end of 2021. Needs to open then because we need to have it ready for the 2022 Festival of the Arts. To Nāraka Civic Precinct, including Central Library. And I'll get one in early here. The paper on the Central Library will be in the public arena tomorrow. So we've been waiting for that for a long time, been pushing for it for a long time. And now that will be with us, so you can all look at that and have a good think about that. Town Hall, the work on that has been underway for a few months now and that work is continuing. Again, that's expected to reopen in 2023. And Let's Get Wellington Moving, I've already mentioned, but we will have a lot of decisions on Let's Get Wellington Moving, a lot of public consultation on Let's Get Wellington Moving. Parts of that over the next few weeks and months. And we're already, we're about to make decisions on the safest speed limits for the central city as well very shortly. Next one, please, Olivia. There are also quite a lot of projects in the, in the community. First two there are resilience projects, the Ni'au Gorge Slip Repair and Stabilisation. If you've been up Ni'au Gorge, you'll see there's a whacking great slip there. The Wadestown Retaining War Resilience Upgrade. And then we've made, we are proposing in this budget to invest more in home energy audits. And that's about our response to climate change. That's another, another piece of that response. And also in weed and pest control. Because we've been on an incredible environmental restoration journey and this is about accelerating that journey. And then there's a number of community centres to be upgraded, including Ardo Valley in the Lampton Ward. And then some investments in the northern suburbs, Newlands Park redevelopment and Alexmore Park. I'm just going to finish off with the last bit here, which is to explain. Next slide, please, Olivia. The last bit here, two rates options, 5.1% and 2.3%. We'll go straight to the next slide. Olivia, please. So I'm just going to talk to both these slides. So this is 5.1 slide and a 2.3 slide in one go. What's the difference between the two of them? Essentially, what we do is that every three years, we revalue our assets. We've just done the revaluation of our Three Waters assets. And what happens is that reflects, we do that to reflect the increasing cost of replacing those assets as they get to the end of their life, we need to replace them. And obviously, it costs more to do that now than it did maybe 10 years, 20 years, 30 years ago. That's why we revalue them. And that revaluation then flows through into, what we do is we then depreciate those assets to, to reflect their gradual ageing. And we use that depreciation to invest in renewal. In other words, new reservoirs, new pipes. If we fund it less, we have less money to do that work. And also, we're effectively, we're borrowing to do that. So the 5.1% rates increase, which is our preferred option, essentially is saying we are going to collect the money we need to invest in the renewal of that key infrastructure. And we'll go to the last slide there. If we were to go for the 2.3%, what that means is we're effectively not collecting enough money to fund that renewal work. And that means we'd either be borrowing it or we'd be doing less of it. Okay, we'll go to the last slide, I think it takes us to the end. Cool. Right. So thank you very much for your patience and listening to that. And we've got a quick poll there, which Esther is going to walk you through.
Could you launch that? Could you launch that poll for us? So we're just, in terms of Andy's presentation, we're just interested in whether you understood the trade-offs between the two rates options that he laid out for us. So just to choose the answer that makes most sense to you. Sure do. The trade-offs make sense. I don't understand them at all and I need more time to have an opinion on that. So Olivia, have we had some results?
Yes, those results are flooding in. And so I'm just going to close this poll now and share those with you.
Very good. So made quite a lot of sense to most. Only a few people haven't understood them. And about a third of you need more time to have an opinion on that. Fair enough. It's a lot to digest quickly. Thank you for that. So we asked you that poll to help us decide on the questions that we're going to pitch to Andy Foster now. So I'd like to invite Diane, who has been fielding your questions and organising your pre-registration questions. What's your first question? What's one of the big themes that's coming up here from our audience tonight?
Thanks. Hi, Esther, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Terrific. Okay. We've had lots of questions about the library and library services. So this is a mix of a registration question from Gwyneth. And then we've had a live question just come in from Matthew. And the question is, what's not going to happen with the Central Library? And then Matthew was asked about the high footfall and use of the smaller localised libraries that have been introduced and how that might influence services.
Cool. Good questions. So as I said during the earlier presentation, we know people have been hanging out for the paper on the libraries. People want to have a look at that. So what we've done is that we've got a whole lot of engineers together to do some work on the engineering structure for the library. And then that's all been QS. So the quantity surveyors have given us some dollar numbers as to what they think it will cost to strengthen the library to various different levels. And you'll see those numbers tomorrow. They've also given us some numbers on what a new library will cost to build if we were to take that option. And we're going to put all this, all this information out in front of you. The intention is to have a significant consultation about that. And it's really an opportunity for everyone to look at that information. I'm particularly interested if people can look at the engineering information and say, hey, we could do that for, we could do that in a different way and we could do it at a different price. That would be particularly interesting. And the other part, we're obviously going to be starting to think about is what's the relationship between the library and Civic Square and how can we improve that? So there'll be a lot to think about in that, in that paper and a lot to think about as we go through that consultation process. But we finally got there. I mean, we were about to do that just before COVID arrived. The aim was to hit the end of March or the first week of April. And then of course, COVID arrived and that just put the whole thing back because key staff just weren't available to finish the papers off. You were muted.
Oh, I'll go to another question, shall I? Okay. So this is a question from Harrison. And Harrison's question is, how will the plan address the lack of affordable housing and unaffordable rent in Wellington?
So there's nothing specifically in the annual plan that we're doing that's different in that space. But there are already a whole lot of things that we were already doing as a result of both the long-term plan that was signed off in 2018 and initiatives since then, and also initiatives to come. So the three things I'd highlight, one is we're continuing to invest in our, our social housing portfolio. And that's an ongoing issue. We're also talking to the government about that as a shovel-ready opportunity. We're saying that, you know, some help would be very, very useful. We're also, we are continuing work. We've got partnerships with some private sector providers where we essentially take the head lease and we take that for 15 years. And then we are able to lease that space out to particularly to key workers. We're looking at people in the, you know, emergency services, teaching, those sort of professions, who may not be able always to afford the rentals, which are, which are in place at the moment. And that, we're expecting the first one of those to come on stream in July. And the third part is that we were about to go out pre-COVID with our next consultation on our spatial planning for growth. And we've had to haul that back a little bit because that required a lot of face-to-face engagement. And we clearly obviously couldn't do that during the COVID time. And that's about changing our planning rules to allow for greater housing development across various parts of the city. So that will be a huge exercise because it then flows through to our district plan.
Okay, nice one. Thanks, Andy. So I'm going, this is a bit related, this question from Nigel. Given COVID-19 has caused social inequality, sorry, how can we help fellow citizens who can't pay their rates? And he says specifically, is there a fund or a charity or something that people can do?
Well, look, there's any number of funds and charities which can help people who are struggling. As to whether that's about paying rates or not, I'm not sure. But the two things that we can do in terms of rates, one is this, excuse me, one of them is a long-term rates remission policy, which is available for certain, certain rate payers. And that's usually related to income and ability to afford rates. The other one is, as I said, what we've done for the 2019-20 rates. So that's the rates bill that you've probably got in the mail in the last few days. We're allowing that to be deferred. Normally, there'd be a 10% penalty on deferral. But we're scratching that 10% penalty. And the only penalty will be essentially council's cost borrowing, which is about, it's less than 2%. And we're allowing that rates bill to be deferred till December. And what we've also allowed for in this annual plan, this draft annual plan, and we'd like your feedback on that, is potentially to allow the next two rates, rates bills to also be deferred. You have to show that you've actually been impacted by COVID. But if you can show that, then it allows for those rates bills to be deferred as well and maybe spread across the next two, five, 10 years. And so again, we'd like your feedback on, you know, how long you think that should be spread over and whether you think it's a good idea as well.
Sorry about that break in transmission. Thank you very much. So of change your option. You're clearly thinking about this as well as a council. Let's take another, shall we take another question or two? No.
Yep. Take one more. Sorry, yes, I've got another one here. Tim, I see you've got a great question here about Build Back Better. And it's such a good one that I want to suggest that we use it at the end of the session as a bit of a wrap-up. So just to know that I've got that and we're going to park it for now. And so Andy, your next question is about, it's from Ellen. And it is about, we were going to have a rates rise that was high and she's got 9.1% here and it's now 5.1. So what's been removed? How did that happen?
There's a degree to which what we've done is we've essentially capitalised some things which we could have put on the rates at the moment. So that they're really around some of the planning for Let's Get Wellington Moving. And also things like the planning for Civic Square. So I mean, I probably argue that we could capitalise those anyway because Let's Get Wellington Moving, we do the planning, which is a bit, which you say is an operating expense. But we do that planning because we intend to then do a capital project. You know, we intend to do a bus priority lane, we intend to do a cycle lane. And likewise with Civic Square, we're doing the planning because we're intending to do some physical work as a result of that planning. And so to me, that, it seems logical that we capitalise those. So that effectively is what we've done. And that, that's the largest part of the difference between the 9.2 and the 5.1.
So there are more questions that have come in. We don't have time to answer all of them now. But the officers will be looking at all of your questions and following them up and posting them and frequently asked questions on the Let's Talk page. So I'm going to So I'm going to wrap here now, thank you very much, Andy. And I'm going to, and, um, and invite Jenny Condean to talk about, um, parking policy. So welcome Jenny and Olivia, if you would like to bring that PowerPoint up.
Thanks very much. Um, we'll go straight to the next slide. I'm here to talk about the parking policy today. So the purpose of the parking policy is really to create a framework. What's in the policy is not going to create any changes on your streets immediately. It's about creating a framework that's going to guide our decision-making about parking for the next 10 years. So we're looking at how we're going to prioritise parking in different parts of the city. And the big issue here is that as we go forward, we know that we're not going to have more on-street parking than we have at the moment. I can't magically widen the roads for us, particularly with Wellington's geography. Um, so, and we are going to start to have fewer car, on-street car parks as we roll out things like Let's Get Wellington Moving. And we have to make space in our streets for other kinds of transport modes. So we know we're going to be having fewer on-street parks and we need to think really carefully about how we're going to prioritise the use of those parks and how we prioritise the use of our street space in general. So we really, this is about what our values and priorities are, which is why it's really, really important that we hear from you and have discussions with you about the future of our parking. The framework will provide great transparency so that as we make decisions going forward, if we come to your street and we say, okay, we've got a parking problem here and we want to, to make some decisions about how we solve it. The policy will provide really clear guidelines about what the principles are that we should be following. And as I said, this is really about how do we, um, grow our city? How do we support, uh, mode shift into other kinds of active modes as we're trying to get to Taata Kura and tackle climate change? And, and those things are going to have really significant impacts on our streets. The review specifically looks at council parking, we don't look at private parking. So a lot of the parking in our city is, is Wilson-style private parking. Uh, and most of council's parking is on-street. We have a very small amount of off-street parking, but mostly in the parking policy review, what we're focused on is that on-street parking and how we're going to use it for our city in the future. Next slide please. So the policy overview, as I said, it's got a framework. So it sets out our objectives about what it is we're trying to achieve and our principles about how we're going to apply the policy when we get to your street or a part of your area. We also set out, uh, in the policy, a parking space hierarchy, which looks at what type of parking and other uses of the space we're going to prioritise. So that on-street space might be prioritised in some places for bus lanes or bike lanes, or it might be prioritised for residents' parking or loading zones, different kinds of parking and different uses in different parts of the city. So the parking space hierarchy says, in this part of the city, what is going to be the priority on the space, for our space on these streets? And then we also cover three other areas, which is area-based planning. Uh, we're going to talk a bit about pricing and as well about parking management and how we tackle problems when they come up. So I'm going to go on to the next slide and we've got a slide on each of those. Thank you. So one of the great things about this policy is we're looking at a new area-based approach. In the past, we've often looked at parking as there's a specific problem. We hear from somebody about, there's a problem on my street. And so our offices go in and say, okay, we're going to fix that by changing this and moving that over there. And we make changes on the street. And then what happens is actually the problem just flows over into nearby streets and creates new problems in, in, in the spillover areas. So by taking an area-based approach, we want to look at the whole space, not just the one street that's having a problem and work out a plan for that whole area so we don't keep chasing our tail. And it's really great being able to take an area-based approach because it means we can also be quite, a lot more holistic about how we approach parking. So we don't just look at it from a transport point of view. We can also say, well, if it's Newtown, we can get the DHB involved and talk about how they, what their needs are for parking as a large employer. We can talk to community groups or look at the other facilities that are in the area and really bring in a whole bunch of people into the conversation who aren't transport engineers, but are just part of their community, talking about how are we going to use this space the best for our community? So those are ways that, that we can actually, um, as I say, kind of go through our city part by part and, um, make some of these changes in our streets as we go. Next slide please. So pricing, again, there's nothing in this policy that will change the price on the street tomorrow. Um, what we're looking at is a framework for how we think about pricing of parking going into the future. And what we're proposing here is called demand-based pricing. And it means that where the parking is in highest demand, which means it's hardest to find a park, then that's where the price should be high. And where there's not a lot of demand for parking and there's lots of empty spaces, then the price should be lower. And so this would be a fundamental shift in the way that we charge for parking. In the past, we've pretty much, um, we set a parking rate right across most of the city and it stays the same for a really long time, sometimes years before we change it again. Whereas demand-based pricing is much more responsive. We would look at, for example, um, in Courtney Place, we know that Courtney Place parking is really busy in the evenings, but not so much during the day. And parking in Lampston Key in that part of the city is really busy during the day and not so much at night. So demand-based pricing means we could actually have different prices for different areas, different times of the day, that would reflect the, the demand and the, that is for that, for those parks. And this is a system that's been operating in many cities around the world really effectively. And Auckland have been using it for the last few years. So our proposal is, is in this policy, we want to hear from you about whether you think this is a good idea. Um, and if you do like it, then it's something that we can roll out on our streets in the future, but it won't be an immediate change. Next slide please. And this is our management hierarchy approach. So if, if a, a street or someone comes to us and says, hey, we've got a problem with the parking here. I can never get a park, it's, it's such a hassle. Then what do our staff do about that? What have, what are our tools in our toolkit? And this sort of sets out which tools we would use and in what order. So, uh, the first thing we would do is look at, at monitoring and enforcement. So are the rules that are in place already, are they being enforced? Do we need to get parking wardens out there a bit more, just to make sure that people are respecting the rules? If we do that and we still don't have a solution to the problem, then we could look at bringing in other kinds of restrictions. We might look at time restrictions if there's no restrictions there at the moment. So we might say, okay, actually these parks are being used, um, a lot for kind of park and ride and people are parking them all day. Maybe we should make them P120 so that they'll turn over more often so that, um, retailers can have customers coming in. Um, if that's not enough to solve the problem, we can look at parking designations. And that means things like saying, oh, maybe this should be a loading zone if there's a particular kind of parking that we need here. Or a big issue and your ward would be, uh, looking at residents' parking zones and saying that these need to be set aside for particular people in a particular use. After that, we can look at parking charges. And, uh, as I've said around demand-based pricing, we might look at, at demand-based pricing as a way to deal with that. But, um, if there's an area that doesn't have charging yet, we might need to bring charging in to help manage that problem. And if there is charging already there, then we could look at increasing the charges to help manage that demand. Finally, if none of those tools in our toolkit are enough to solve the problem, then we can look about, uh, coming back to this area-based approach about looking at alternatives. And as, and looking at if, if we need to increase supply of off-street parking in the area and perhaps working with companies or, um, and looking at how we might provide parking if there's, if there's a need for that. But we want to go through all of our other options first before we come to that because there are a lot of other tools in our toolkit that we could use. Um, next slide please. That's us, so that's, um, time for questions, which I'm sure there will be many because it's a really interesting area and people always have opinions about parking.
They do, they do. We're just going to take a couple now, uh, and a stream of them have come in. I can, um, see on my screen up here, uh, but they will be answered, uh, and frequently asked questions and posted for you. So have you got just a couple for us, Diane?
I do. Um, okay, so, uh, this one's from Ellen and it's just come in. Jenny, can you please explain why the parking policy only covers Wellington City Council parking and not all parking? So thinking about some of those private car parking places as well?
Sure, so it's a Wellington City Council policy, so we can really only control, um, and affect those parking spaces that, that are under our control. We, uh, a lot of the private parking, as I say, is owned by private companies. And so they make their own decisions about where they want parking to, to be and how much they're going to charge for it. As a council, we can work with them and, and we do work with them about what their prices are to try and, um, influence that, but at the end of the day, they are private companies that are in business to make their own decisions. So we don't have any influence over what they decide to do.
And let's just take one more question Diane, before we bring the rest of the panel in.
Right, you are. Um, this one's from Scott when he registered. Um, parking policy, is it the tail wagging the dog? And the question is what's being done to reduce traffic in the city?
Great question. And I think it's, it's not the tail wagging the dog because it, it's one of these things we're trying to, to tackle, uh, traffic and congestion in the city by giving people alternative ways of getting around. So getting people out of their cars, giving them options to walk or cycle, scooter or take public transport so that we can reduce traffic and reduce congestion. But in order to provide people with those choices and those options, they need the space to do that. And we have to find the space somewhere on our streets. And when we look at our streets and think, well, what, where can we find any space? Especially in Wellington, our streets are very narrow, we don't have a lot of space to play with. And usually the only place we can find space in our streets is where the parking is at the moment. So that's really the big thing here is when it comes to the parking policy, what do you want to use that really valuable public space for? Do you want it to be used for parking, um, to support retailers and allow people to come into the city? To make sure that people can, can access those services? Or do you want to be able to use it to support bike lanes and bus lanes and other ways that will allow people to get around it without their car? So it's a, it's a difficult decision and we really want to hear about what you prioritise because that's what we're trying to, to get to the heart of here.
And we'll talk to you shortly about the ways in which you can make submissions on these ideas. Thank you very much, Jenny, much appreciated. And now I'm going to invite, uh, the rest of the panel in uh, because you had a whole host of questions, uh, about your local community and, uh, uh, your mayor and your councillors are coming around now to, um, answer those. Welcome back, thank you. Diane, where should we start? And who with?
Okay, so I'm going to start, we've got a question here from, uh, Marco. And I think I'm going to send it to Tamatha. And the question is, how does this set Wellington up to address creating a livable city and other public and the other public health crisis, which is climate change?
Kiala Kato, can you hear me all good?
Right.
Awesome, um, apologies if you can hear my dog snoring in the background, he's a very loud snorer. Um, yeah, um, thank you Marco for, for your question and for your presentation at, uh, SPC this morning. Um, and a big, uh, shout out to my colleague councillor Pannett, who was instrumental in getting us to declare climate emergency last year and, and Taata Kura, which is our first to zero plan. Um, so I think the, the main things within the annual plan that address climate change, um, uh, well, there are, there are quite a few and I think you could argue that a lot of the initiatives, um, either directly or indirectly affect our emissions. Uh, the ones that stand out to me are our, um, money that we'd like to set aside for home energy audits. Uh, we know that there's a large portion of our, um, emissions come from stationary energy. And if we can make sure that homes are warm, safe and dry and that they're preserving energy and conserving that, we know that that will be, that that will go a long way. But also it, um, covers principles of a just transition. So that's making sure that, um, people who are least, um, responsible for our emissions are not, uh, disproportionately affected by those. So, uh, there's that, there's, uh, Andy talked about the, uh, sorry, Mayor Foster talked about the money that, um, could be put aside for pest control. And I think, um, if we can control our pests and have greater biodiversity, I think that also has, uh, flow-on effects for our emissions, particularly if we can get more native species and other exotic species around town that are better at sequestering carbon. Uh, what else we've got, there's lots in there about waste. Um, we know that our waste is a big problem in Wellington, but we know that councillor Foon has been really spearheading this issue. Um, and it all comes back to changing our attitude and perception towards our waste. So we need to move away from that outer sight, outer mind, uh, mind frame. And, um, you know, be thinking about where our waste comes from, how we interact with it and then where it goes after we dispose of it. Uh, and also, um, we, there's some money set aside for an, an Enviro Tech Accelerator. So, um, that looks at how we can encourage the private sector and businesses to reduce their waste and reduce their emissions. Um, because we know that we can't get to, um, halved emissions by 2030 and net zero by 2050. Everyone isn't moving in the same boat together, you know, he wa ke ekinoi, as we say. Uh, and finally, um, there will be a suite of, uh, traffic resolutions and minor street adjustments to make our streets more accessible for all people, uh, not just able-bodied people and, uh, guess, middle-aged people. So we want our streets to be conducive and safe for young people, old people, disabled people, so that walking and cycling is a more attractive and preferable mode of transport as opposed to the private car. So that's what I'd say, uh, kind of wrapped up, uh, some of the provisions within the annual plan that will contribute to, uh, cutting our emissions.
Thank you, thank you for that. Uh, do you have another question for us Diane? I see them streaming in.
I do. Um, I'm going to ask this one of you, Aiona, and it's a fairly broad one. But there are quite a few questions about, um, density, uh, how we're managing growth and so forth. And the question is actually, uh, it's from Judith, uh, when she registered. And it's what, uh, the question is what is happening with, uh, Wellington City Council's spatial plan?
Oh, Kiala, everyone again, um, great question. Um, look, obviously we had to pause that due to COVID and I guess, um, now we need to think about density maybe a little bit differently now that we have had the experience of a pandemic. You know, that we do need to be able to provide, um, opportunities to, uh, sometimes be a little bit apart. Um, but we know that lots of people want to live in Wellington, it's such a great city. Um, and so we need to make sure that there, um, are amazing houses and green spaces and good infrastructure to support that. Um, and so look, we're just, um, just making sure that, um, we can engage safely with people and just looking at the process where we go from now. But we're keen to make progress on it this time and then get on to developing a new and exciting district plan.
Lots of planning going on and needed. Thank you, Aiona. Uh, next question Diane.
Nicola, um, this is a question from Jack Wilin and she's asking about the convention centre. And what is the thinking about, um, going ahead with that when there are so many other things that seem important at the moment? Um, and she mentions in particular, the city needs housing for homeless. Would you like to talk to that?
Sure, so, um, hi, thank you for that question. So there are always competing priorities for city councils. And one of the things about the convention centre is, uh, that it has largely been paid for by commercial rate payers, not by residential rate payers. Um, and part of the reason, part of the thinking behind it is that it will, first of all, really regenerate that part of Wellington, um, between Tapapa and Courtney Place, which at the moment is a little bit suboptimal. Um, so that'll be great. The other thing is there are very few venues in Wellington where you can hold events. I mean, since I became a city councillor, I've got used to going to events and there are about four places you can go to. And, uh, we really do need some big spaces like that. The thing with the convention centre is it's underway. Uh, it's, it's too late. I mean, we, we were never going to put, um, housing for the homeless or affordable housing there. It's a very valuable commercial site. Um, but we have to try and look after all aspects of people who live in the city. And that, the convention centre will help drive economic, um, boost to that part of town. It will work in really well with Tapapa. They originally weren't so keen on it, now they realise it will be a real strength to have the two next to each other. There'll be a great walkway to cut through so that, that will be great for people walking around the city, which is, well, Aiona and I both are mainly walking around Wellington, so we will appreciate it. Um, so it, the thing is, we don't, it's not one or the other. We're trying to do the best we can for everybody. And the convention centre is a particularly exciting project, which I think, you know, has been controversial, is controversial. Uh, just a bit like the Sydney Opera House was always controversial. So anyway, it's, um, it's underway.
Lovely, thank you Nicola. Another question Diane.
Yep, so this one's come in just now from Gerald and I, I'm just gonna, I'm not sure who would like to answer this. And actually if it's, it's more a kind of a development or a parking thing. But Gerald asks, in relation to developing a better planned, sustainable residential density, it is clear that the one car park per dwelling requirement is preventing many good residential projects, putting more importance on car storage and parking rather than people spaces. And I wondered if anyone on the panel has something, uh, a response to that question?
Who would like to respond to that? Andy?
Yeah, that's, that's working, isn't it? Yeah, but, um, thanks Gerald, good, good question. It's one, actually, I thought probably we should have picked up in the parking, the draft parking policy and so that people could have had a look at it there. But the place that it will get picked up on, and you, you know, the parking policy is obviously open for submission. So you might want to make some comment about it. Uh, but the place that we will certainly be looking at this is in the district plan. Uh, so the, the aim is that we'll go through the, the spatial policy, um, consultation, which was going to start, um, uh, 6th of April, uh, we'll go through that, but later on in the year. The aim then will be to move to a draft district plan sometime, probably it was going to be the end of this year now, probably the beginning of next year because of COVID. And then to a, um, an actual statutory district plan. This is going to be one of, one of the important issues in there, one of many important issues. It's also going to be quite nuanced as well because there are some places where actually requiring car parking ironically protects character. Uh, so it's going to be one we've got to think about very, very carefully, uh, as to where we want parking. And some places, for example, if you're on a main route, uh, you might want the parking to be off-street. Whereas, uh, on a, another route, you might say, well, it's fine to have some parking on the street because it's not going to be a bus lane or a bike lane. So we've got to think very carefully through this and I, I'd invite you when we get to that stage to give us feedback on those sort of things.
So more coming and please contribute to that. Aiona?
Very quickly, um, great question Gerald, and I completely support you. And, um, definitely be looking at that issue and would like to, um, And definitely be looking at that issue and would like to particularly in Poggi now, really get our suburbs very sustainable, you know, good access to public transport, walking, cycling, scootering is the best way to go from my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Aiona. And COVID-19 has changed quite a lot, the amount of walking we're getting on our streets. So let's take another question.
Question from Grace. Tamatha, I think this one's for you and it is, what is the annual plan, what is in the annual plan for students?
Okay, so, oh, this is a good question, given that I was the student president last year. I'm still understanding the, the, the kind of nuance between the annual plan, the long-term plan and the spatial plan. In my opinion, just given my knowledge of student issues, we're looking at housing and we're looking at public transport. And I don't think either of those really fit into the annual plan, to be honest with you. So in terms of housing, that's, that's something that we will need to address through the long-term plan and through the spatial plan. But prior to the lockdown, I was in contact frequently with both of the student associations, just making sure that students had adequate information and were able to submit on that. And I'll still be doing that work. It's just been deferred to be, to a bit later than we expected. So that's kind of covers that. And in terms of public transport, again, that's kind of more a regional council thing and providing those buses. But what I can say is that the relationship this triennium so far has been really positive between ourselves and regional council. It seems like we're coming up with some really good solutions. Public transport is of course free until the first of June. So that means that you can jump on that if you need to. But I think that's kind of the, so sorry if you can hear that snoring. But I think that's what I'd say. The other, the other thing I suppose is that students like to go out to town and, and have fun and have lots of recreational things to do. And I think it's important to acknowledge that our hospitality arts and culture sectors, which also employed is quite heavily, has taken a massive hit due to COVID. And I know many of our colleagues are working really hard to get that back in running and healthy again, including my colleague Nicola, Diane, Andy, all of us, we're all working our hardest to get that going again because we know that that's where a lot of student jobs are. So yeah, so I think in terms of solving those systemic and long-term student issues, that's, there's other venues to do that. But I think there's lots of things that students would support within the annual plan nevertheless.
Wonderful. Thank you, Tamatha. And I see there's quite a lot of very specific technical parking questions coming through. We won't be able to take those now, but be assured that they will be answered by officers and in the frequently asked questions. So look out for those. We've got time for just two or three more questions, Diane, so make them some good ones.
Okay, great. Well, I, well, I'm liking this one. This one's, uh, look, I have to say, I'm sorry, I've lost who it came from, but they'll know who they are. It's, nothing happens in my area. Why is that? Nicola, do you want to have a go at that one?
Well, sure. So it depends what the area is. Because obviously there are some, if you live in Courtney Place, there'll be plenty happening, but it might not be what you want to do. So it does very much depend. But there are, in most areas around Wellington, there are residence associations. And so they often are a good point of contact for activities. Look in your local supermarket, there are notice boards there of things you can do. I mean, as a city council, a lot of our activities, our bigger activities are focused in the centre of the city, which of course is our ward, so that lucky us. But I mean, I do, I do think people should be able to find ways of, of joining bridge clubs or, you know, walking clubs or, it really depends on what you want to do. I mean, some people might want to take up learning a foreign language. Others may want to learn, learn how to take up yoga, for example. So there are plenty of places where there are, you know, there is information about that. And the council produces a booklet once, is it once a quarter? Which has all the things that are going to be on in the city, which is a very helpful compendium of all that is happening. So I, I think there's plenty of information there. It's just a matter of, of trying to find it. And if you can't, send an email at council. I'll find, I'll find things for you to do. I've always found things for my children to do.
Yeah, good. And Tamatha, you wanted to respond?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that and just say, at the moment, Zealandia is free to the public. The zoo, I believe, is free also to the public. There's lots of, lots of our kind of main attractions are all trying to bring people back in. So I think one of the big ways we can support them as locals is go out there and, and explore. I know in Zealandia, there's lots of different tracks that you can go down to, to explore. You can find different birds every time, different tracks. And same with the zoo, you might find different animals every time. So I know there's heaps of extra things to do at the moment.
Fantastic. Look out for those. Diane, a couple more?
Okay, this is a new one from Gabriella. It's just come in live. And it's to do with shovel ready projects. So are there any specific projects that we have put forward to government as one of the ones that can get up and running quite quickly to help with the recovery? And I'm just whoever would like to talk to that.
I, I should do that one. Yeah, we participated with the regional councils or the councils of the region. So all nine councils and putting, putting to government a, a whole series of regional scale shovel ready projects. And then we also put our own in and also let's get Wellington, the let's get Wellington moving package with through NZTA. There's also a set of proposals there. The ones that we put in, in our, in our own right, there were several in the water space. So Amorara Reservoir was one. There was some stormwater projects and pump station projects. Social housing was in there as well, particularly Harrison Street, but also across the portfolio as a whole. We also put in, the convention centre was in there because we were always hoping for some government support for that. And we also put in the municipal office building. So that's the old council building next to the town hall. We're hoping to put this, the school of music into that, but it's a pretty challenging project. So we put that one in there as well. We put a couple of others in too.
Sorry about that break in transmission, but let's take a final question. I'm going to throw this open to the panel. And this is a question from Tim. He says, I'd like to hear more about how can council plans to build back better from COVID-19 in terms of inclusive, climate and environmentally friendly, environmentally friendly city? And how this could flow on from the annual plan to the long-term plan? Quite a mouthful there, but let's hear from a couple of you, Aiona and Andy, and we'll wrap with that. Aiona, would you like to start?
Hi, Tim. Hey, great question. So Tamatha and I moved it, we worked with a lot of our colleagues on that. Absolutely. Like this COVID-19 has been a disaster. But it does also provide us an opportunity to build back better, which is why we put together a package, as Tamatha's already indicated, around energy efficiency, around green infrastructure, around, definitely around some walking. So, and what we're hoping to do is to use this as a small foundation to build into something much bigger for the long-term plan. And I'm sure many of us will have some big ambitions, but I'm certainly keen to see a lot more earthquake street funding going on, more climate-friendly infrastructure being built, lots of cycleways and so on. So it's really exciting. Thank you.
I actually voted against that package of, of recommendations because it is going to increase our rates. And my big concern is to make sure that Wellington is affordable. And I am very concerned about the rates, the cost of the rates for people, especially when many are losing their jobs or having compulsory pay cuts. I think we have to focus on making sure we can pay our bills and make sure that Wellington is affordable for everybody, rather than have lots of nice-to-have projects. So I have a totally different perspective on that one.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. If I, if I can just tell you also, Tim, what the, the kind of things which we were doing anyway and intending to do, and in fact, we're trying to accelerate. So in the let's get Wellington moving space, we're trying to, and again, it's one of the shovel ready areas, accelerate walking cycling and public transport initiatives. Obviously, the urban planning work that we do, the, the more compact our city is, and obviously we've got to do a bit of thinking around what, what COVID and, and a bit of separation might require us to do. But the more compact we are, the more able we are to walk, walk, cycle, use public transport. And therefore the lower our emission level is. And then also in the, the environmental restoration space, we've been doing incredible, we've had an incredible restoration journey over the last, my entire time on council. Something I'm amazed, I'm really proud of. We've got a real opportunity now to, to add to that. And the government's Jobs for Nature budget allocation, we've got the opportunity, particularly if people in our city lose jobs, to be able to give some meaningful employment in doing environmental restoration work. So I've put our hand up as a councillor and said, we want to be part of that. And then of course, we've already had the mention of a circular economy. So we need to do more in trying to make sure that we don't just put waste in the ground. And we're also, this year we'll be getting a report back in September on sludge treatment. So we're trying to put less, again, less into the landfill. And the final thing to mention is that we have the action plan for Te Atakura, the first to zero, our carbon, carbon neutral policy. And that will include a lot of those things, but it will include a lot of other things as well. So we, we are advancing on this on many fronts. And we are, you know, we're aiming to be a more sustainable city across all of those areas.
Andy, would you like to wrap us by telling people why they should bother putting in a submission to the annual plan?
Because it makes a difference. We don't know everything. We want your views. We want to know what your priorities are. And sometimes you're going to know things that we, we don't know. And, and that's what, that's what the value is there. And also if we put out a proposal, you, people come at this, there's, there's no such thing as the community view. There are a whole range of different views within our community and we need to hear those. And that needs to be able to influence the decisions that we make. So, you know, we, we really want to hear from you, not, not just on the annual plan, but on the parking policy and indeed on anything else we do. As I said, you know, we're going to be putting the, the library information out to you as of tomorrow. And you'll be able to look at that and be able to give us your views on that as well. So your, your views count. And so I'd encourage you to participate, your city.
So Olivia, if you could bring up a slide that just outlines for people how they can participate in this process. You can have your say via the Let's Talk Wellington website. There's also social media options. You can email submissions to these, to email addresses. And there's a dedicated consultation helpline to help you with this process. So please, you've, you've heard tonight, all of your councillors and your mayor invite you to put in submissions. And we'd like to run a final poll, if you could bring that up, Olivia, to see how many of you are interested in putting in submissions indeed at all, if you could run that poll. So can you tell us how you plan to provide feedback on the annual plan or the parking policy? So and it's, you can, you can tick multiple boxes. So you can tick the annual plan and the parking policy. It'd be fantastic to hear from you. Let us know if you're not sure yet, if you're still deciding. And perhaps you won't be providing feedback at all. So are those starting to come in?
Yes, we've had a great portion of our attendees tonight vote on that poll. So I'm going to close that now and share the results with you all.
Oh, fantastic. So we're getting a lot of people wanting, that's great. So well over you wanting to provide submissions and some of you still thinking about it. Thank you very much for that. So thank you for bearing with us tonight. There's been some transmission difficulties from several quarters. This recording will be up on, it's ready, closed captioned on Wednesday. Your questions, which we have not been able to get to, will be answered along with the others from the other webinars. And there, there are certainly some themes there so that you can get answers to your questions. So the last thing I would like to say is thank you very much to the panel for coming out tonight. And thank you also to the team that stands behind you, Olivia, Amy, Diane and Claire, who have been making all of this happen. But most importantly, to you, the, our participants, our residents, who have joined us to be a part of this process. Andy, would you like to close us with a kataki?
My pleasure. Unuhi'a, 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 kiti uru tapunui. Ke watia, kea mama, tenaka, titi nana, te wairua, i te aratakatu. Koya ra e rongo, fakaria akeki ronga. Ke watia, ke watia, ai ra kuawatia.
Kia ora.
Kia ora, everyone. Thank you all for coming along.